Um, Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Before I do that.
How are you?
Is it me?
Yeah.
We're in the right places.
Sorry, I just have to not let you see them. Are we ready?
We're ready.
And we're in committee meeting to order for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six oh one P M. Dr. Ober, who is joining us, you know me?
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Madam President. Good evening to board trustees, members of the admin team, attendants and community members that may be attendants as well. Uh, this evening I have three items for the committee agenda. Uh, the first is something that's been sitting on my desk for almost about two years now. Uh, I've had engraved bricks and papers sitting there as a reminder of a fundraising opportunity that was presented to me by, uh, Coach Ed Dalton, again, not quite two years ago. Um, the issue was never should we as a district do this, uh, but how? Meaning, uh, what organization would be capable of fundraising for multiple entities? And I'm not gonna get too much into that because in a moment we'll have Mr. Group explain that to you. Um, but again, the idea there was to do something that could benefit multiple organizations within the district. Early on, I did identify the McGuffey Alumni Association. Um, however, they, they needed some work to do before they could even tackle this. I believe now they're in a great position. Uh, they have, uh, reorganized and now they are called the McGuffey Alumni Foundation. And, uh, with that, tonight we have a presentation. On behalf of the McGuffey Alumni Foundation, uh, and Mr. Carl Group. And Carl's gonna speak to you about, uh, some opportunities that would require board approval and the school to take part in. So, Mr. Group, with that, I'll give it to you.
Hello, Carl Group from South Franklin Township. I'm here on behalf of, uh, McGuffey Alumni Foundation. Uh, we've reorganized and, uh, changed the name a little bit for some reasons. What I'm passing out is the brick sale. This is just an advertisement, just an upcoming event. I wanted to get more approval on the sale beforehand. The way this is gonna work.
Oh, wow. Oh, that would have to be.
And, uh.
Am I supposed to pass these to the audience or?
We can. That's just some, some.
Thank you.
No worries. Um, if you look at the paper that I passed around, did everyone get one? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, up there where the blue stars are, it says six to hundred, sixty to a hundred dollars for the sale of it. The brick stuff's around twenty dollars, the manufacturer. Uh, the, of Alumni Foundation, we're gonna take ten percent of that. Um, then if you look down at the list of sports and ag and, uh, chorus, theater, on your application or your order form, you will pick one of those. And it's gonna be approximately thirty dollars per brick will go to that organization. So, it's, it's a great fundraiser. Um, we have a couple manufacturers that we're looking into. Um, the one fundraiser, or the one manufacturer has, yes, the Polar Engraving dot com. They, uh, they'll help with the setup of the sale, the brochures. They'll take care of the, uh, and it's all free shipping from all the organizations. But, uh, you'll be able to order online. Um, all orders get approved by the foundation before they, they go in. So, if someone sends in an order from McGuffey Stinks, that isn't gonna happen. So, uh, we're gonna go that route. Um, I'm, I'm gonna pass a picture around here also. This is two of the fundraiser bricks. If you go into our stadium, um, if you go to the stadium, there's these papers are already there. My printer.
Wow.
They're bringing for fourteen hundred bricks right now.
That's what I was asking. I was sitting here wondering that.
You pop those out and put in two bricks. The bricks are four by eight. So, uh, you pop those papers out and put these papers in. Not that difficult to do. Um, and it's thirty dollars will go to soccer, football, cheer, golf, tennis, volleyball, cross-country track, boys' basketball, marching band, girls' basketball, wrestling, rifles, softball, baseball, ag, chorus and theater. So, uh, part of the committee wants to charge a hundred dollars a brick, but I think we're gonna settle closer to sixty dollars a brick.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Will the Alumni Foundation keep track of who goes to what and then you will?
We'll give them a check. It won't go through the business office.
Okay, that was my question.
Right.
All right.
We just need permission to, to have the fundraiser, basically, and install the bricks.
So, can you just confirm your organization's talking about this? It may be sixty dollars for, this is for something that is without a specific insignia? That maybe a hundred for something with, like, I'm thinking if you're doing, like, the Marines.
Right.
Insignia or something maybe doesn't, I don't know.
Well, basically, it's twenty dollars for it.
The little skinny one is that last, does it?
No, they cost the same.
Oh, okay.
But they're all gonna be that tall, is that correct?
Four by eight right now.
Okay.
Uh, we can expand, maybe, maybe if you make a larger one and say, uh, Tim Scorner wants to put one in there as an advertisement. They can do it on a bigger one. Uh, these can go on a wall later time. You can build a wall, pop out more sidewalks. Uh, it's an ongoing moneymaker.
But for now, the, the idea is to replace these for now?
To get started.
To get started.
That's the easiest start of.
Right, right, okay, that's.
Does it go off way out here when we come in?
No, it's down into the stadium.
Oh, 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 I remember when we talked about it before. Yeah, oh, okay. That'll be wonderful.
We can start with fourteen hundred right off the bat and just replace like for like and it's not a whole lot of.
What's it cost to imprint something on, on this?
Okay, twenty dollars if you get one without a fancy drawing.
Okay.
If you send your, a picture of your dog, you show, they can put picture of your dog and you can say, write in whatever you wanna write in on that. That's six additional dollars. And the way we're looking at it, it's gonna be sixty dollars. Uh, the organizations that are receiving the approximate thirty dollars will make twenty-four on that brick instead of thirty.
I see.
Because it costs six bucks to get a.
Right, yeah. I see.
So, everything's gonna, we're, we're not gonna adjust as a foundation, we're not gonna.
Well, maybe you're on your end to do.
Yes.
This upgrade, that makes sense.
Right.
How long will this brick be in place and be maintained?
There's lifetime warranty on it. They use cemetery paint, some cemetery paint in there. Brick racks, they'll replace it. That's every company says that. Um, the only thing when you install, there's a, uh, like a concrete sealer that you put on it. They want it on their one-time deal.
So, would you do that per brick or do you do that like per section?
You can. This, this company, it's free shipping. If we'd order a thousand bricks, they'd put on a tractor trailer truck, ship it in here, unload it and it'd be ready to go in. Or you could order five bricks and they'll ship five bricks U P S.
So, then who actually takes care of putting, putting this down and?
That, that is something that we're gonna have to work out. We haven't gotten that far. We want an approval first.
Right.
I mean, um, if the maintenance people do it, I know Ag talked about they could do it. Um, we can give a committee of people to put those in. So Tech, so Ag.
About who engraves it?
What's that?
Who engraves it?
The company we order them from.
So, when you order it, you're ordering it with what you want on every single brick and they send in a thousand or whatever.
Right.
Whatever you wish.
Yeah, the company will set up, we can put it right on the, um, McGuffey's homepage or wherever and someone can go in there and order bricks.
But your organization would still get approval before the brick is printed?
It has to go through us before they'll print it.
Carved or whatever they're doing.
Right.
So, they'll, they'll charge you, it'll cost you twenty dollars plus six dollars a brick.
Right. And this is one of the only companies, uh, Polar is one of the only companies allowed to put in the official military insignia. You can get the Marines and then someone's name and date on it.
Okay. Sounds like you're getting ten percent of sixty dollars.
Sixty, yeah, we'll get six bucks.
And the other, they'll get thirty and it's costing twenty-six.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think you should charge them for something that is permanent.
Well, you work that out with my wife. She's a, she's a pretty important committee member.
And your sister.
My sister, yeah, they all think sixty.
Mr. Group, where, I might have missed, where would we put these?
Uh, there's a picture going around.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a start. That's right.
But where is this?
It's a stadium.
If you go, if you buy a ticket and go through the main gate, yeah, between the.
Okay.
That, that was put in there when they built the stadium, it was put in for this reason.
Okay.
The next one, okay.
Way back when.
So, Mr. Group, um, we're good if we put that on the agenda for next month? Are you good with that or do you need us to do something?
I would love to have it now. The people who order for Christmas or.
We're not spending money, right? So, we should be able to add that, correct? We would have to have somebody make a motion to add it to the agenda and we would need to vote on that.
They make the motions?
We have to do that actually during the regular meeting. So, during the regular meeting, we'll need somebody to make a motion to add that to the agenda and then once that motion passes, then we'll have to vote on the actual, but we can do that.
Okay, awesome.
Do you have any idea how many bricks are available?
Fourteen hundred.
In that space right there, you can put fourteen hundred times thirty dollars to go to the sporting. Or it can go to Ag or Theater.
Forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Forty-two thousand dollars. Very good idea, very good idea.
Well, Mr. Dalton started it two years ago and. And we finally. Yeah, we're gonna try to get it done.
Awesome, thank you.
Do you need the paper stack or? Don't have to.
You would do that?
You'd not be the first.
But you don't need to break it away, really? I'm sorry. Sir, over there, the two are over there. So, Michelle, if you'll do that, I want to see you to make a motion to put on the agenda the McGuffey Alumni Foundation fundraiser as presented.
And where do you want me to do that on?
We're asked right after C, right after presentation. Before public.
And then you recommend a motion?
No, no.
Okay.
To add. McGuffey Alumni Foundation, a motion to, well, to add to the agenda. Yeah, a motion to add to the agenda to approve the McGuffey Alumni Foundation fundraiser as presented. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Dr. Ober, thank you so much, Mr. Group. You did a great job and thank you, we're excited.
Thank you, Mr. Group.
Well, thank you.
Also, thank you to the Alumni Foundation, uh, for taking this work on and for their work to this point. Uh, item number two, um, at the September board meeting, uh, the board tabled the recommendation to approve the, uh, voluntary twenty twenty-three Pennsylvania youth survey, which was called P A's. I think at the time, when we first did this last month, uh, there were several questions, uh, about, um, student identities and the sharing of information. Uh, again, this is a survey that's given every other year for grades six, eight, ten and twelve. So, uh, here tonight's promotional information regarding the survey is high school principal, Mr. Mark Dones, Mr. Dones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, the Pennsylvania youth survey, um, as Dr. Ober said, it's, um, something that we've administered. Now, we haven't administered, I think, until, I think two thousand and eighteen was the last time we administered. It was before the pandemic and we hadn't administered it since. So, it's a every other year type of thing. But I got some information together about what it is, what information is discussed on the survey with the students. Um, where does that information go? How's it remain confidential? What is done with this information? So, I tried to, and how that would actually work here to administer. So, I think that covers all the boxes, but if you have any questions, um, I've probably administered this, I don't know, in twenty years, ten times, nine times, eight times, some, something like that. Um, a couple things, um, the P A's survey, um, is something that's done statewide. Um, it's administered actually through the Pennsylvania State University College of Health and Human Service, uh, Health and Human Development. They're the ones that oversee it. So, it works, that information goes back to Penn State and that, from there, it's disaggregated out and filtered through and then sent back as information and data to the counties particularly. County Department of Health is really who it goes to, okay? So, the outside partner for the survey is Penn State. It's confidential anonymous, meaning that there's students do not identify themselves in any way, shape or name, form as to their name, uh, gender, uh, it may, might ask for grade, it's gonna ask for grade level. So, you can disaggregate that because of.
But no personally identified.
No personal identified information. And, and I understand and I respect the confidentiality issue, um, particularly when I go over what it's gonna address and what's gonna survey. So, I certainly understand people that have concerns about this. Um, you know, I think it's something that we've done for the rationale was to provide funding. The data taken from this goes to Penn State, disaggregated on a statewide basis, back to the counties to cover funding for things like the Washington County Department of Human Services, who take care of everything from abuse hotline, domestic violence, drug and alcohol crisis, human trafficking, mental health crises, protective services, sexual assault, suicide prevention. That's just things that the Washington Department of Health does. I mean, it's, it's a considerable list of, of things that they're doing and providing throughout the county. Um, it also goes back to southwestern Pennsylvania Human Services. They handle mental health, particularly if students, uh, in crisis. If we have a student here that becomes, and, and that occurs during the school day, um, I think at all levels. Um, if a student is in crisis, we will partner with an outside agency to provide that one individual support for them on a twenty-four hour basis, mental health, the kids, um, making ideations of suicide and things like that. We did, we, we're responsible for acting upon that and handing it off to the professionals. Those are people who provide that service to us, they're our partner. Um, Washington County Drug and Alcohol Prevention. Once again, we have students who have violations that involve drug and alcohol, they have to go through an assessment by them, right? So, they're handling that countywide for all the people, not only in the high school, middle school populations, but countywide. Um, and then Centers for Domestic Violence. So, all these things, all these agencies, they need data to go get funding. So, the student information that's collected is collected on a county level, sent back as sort of like block grants to those agencies to do that. But they need data to justify their budgets and this survey helps to provide that data. So, is any questions about sort of how that works in that process?
I have a couple questions.
Okay, that's not all I, I, that's not all I have to say about it.
Well, no, go ahead.
Okay, let me go over what.
Can you answer my question?
Okay, I might answer it. But, um, so in terms of it, of the way it's administered here, uh, parents can review the survey. Uh, I don't have the surveys, we haven't submitted for the surveys yet. We have to agree to doing it before they'll send us the surveys, which is sort of, I looked to try and get a survey. It says on their website, you can get a, a copy of the survey. It's not easy to get, you have to jump through some hoops to get it. Okay? Um, the P A's survey asks questions, specific questions about youth, uh, health and development in the school, the home and the community on these topics. Alcohol, alcohol use, drug use, tobacco use, violence and mental health. Those are the things that those questions are tied to. And they go on a basis of those topics in your school, at your home and in your community. So, it sort of goes through all those types of questions. Um, the way it's been administered here in the past is that parents receive a one call and say, we're gonna be administering this on this day, the, the P A's survey to these grades on this day. Typically be given in an English classroom because the English classroom, every student has English every year. It's the only content area that they have every, every year. So, we've used the English classroom in the past. Um, at one call informing them, there's also, we'll have a link on our website informing them that they can opt out of their child taking this survey through filling out a Google form. It'll, right there on the website, it'll say P A's survey. And they click on there, they click on the opt-out button right there, collects their information, the name of them and their student and then their, their, they, those kids will be pulled out of that classroom that day that's administered.
You have a form that is gonna be online?
One second.
Not, sorry, not while he's presenting from the community, from the community part.
Um, the, we could, we could, well, we could have a hard copy form, but actually, things you give to high school students and middle school students, forms don't always make it home and don't always make it out with a lot of context. If I do it with a Google link or a one call, then I know the parents will see the information in its entirety, right? And then it's a lot easier for them to opt out right there. Like, we, we use forms, but we tend to move away from them for everything because, um, the paper just doesn't make it home. Parents intentions are no longer in it because they didn't get the paper, they didn't know anything about it and their kids are already taking the survey. So, but one call directed into the website, filling out the form on the website is actually the most expedient way to get actually in communicating with parents as opposed to communicating with a parent through a student. So, we try and make it that, that, that clear. Um, yes, we have done paper copies to do that, but I, I just, that's not sort of like the most successful way. If I'd have school pictures, I know the best way to do that is through online now. It's not through a piece of paper. It's just sort of where, where parents are at too. Um, it's a passive consent, meaning that, and that's dictated by the, the P A's survey. Passive consent means you opt out of it. You're considered to be taking it until you opt out of it, not opt in it. You understand the difference between passive and active consent? Um, so far, eight out of the fourteen districts in Washington County, I was able to pull this off the website, eight in Washington County have consented to participate in this for the year. Six have not committed towards this date. Um, they have until probably the beginning of December to make that final decision. Maybe some of them haven't done it, maybe some of them are looking at it like we are. Is this something that we're interested in doing or not? Um, but, um, they kept pretty, um, accurate records in terms of who's taking it and who's not taking it. Last year in two thousand twenty-one, obviously two years ago, uh, one thousand and seventy-two schools throughout Pennsylvania participated in this survey. So, that would have been middle school, high schools because of the age groups are readily identifiable. So, um, like I said, I certainly understand it does ask sensitive questions and sensitive, on sensitive topics that include a child's home and a child at school and a child anywhere in the community. Um, but that data, once again, would come back from here, it'd be administered one day. If a kid said, I don't wanna take this and wanted to stop right there, then we would just, you know, the teacher's instructed, just collect it, right? And, and just, the kids stopped where it's at, they can skip questions that they wanna skip, they would be told that ahead of time. Um, if it makes them uncomfortable to answer and they start down it and start and then say, I don't wanna finish this, then they would be given that ability to walk out. We turn, this isn't going to be like somebody hovering over them to make them do it. Uh, it's voluntary and the kids know it's voluntary, right? But it's something that will, we will pass out unless they've been opted out before that. Then at that point, they raise their hand, say, I, I don't wanna take this, then it'll be collected. No questions asked, no pressure to participate. I think that's a very important factor of it. Um, because once they, it starts asking sensitive questions, then maybe that causes them some anxiety and that's not necessarily what we're trying to accomplish either, right? So, um, all that data is aggregated from all the schools participating, goes back to Penn State, is then used as a data source for the counties to go out and solicit funds based, because those are both, those results are shared back to the County Department of Health. And they could say, hey, we can justify the risk factors for this age group in this community is here based on this data. So, is there any questions I could ask about it?
There's a couple of my questions, but I do have more. First of all, we in the school don't do anything to like incentivize participation?
No.
Okay.
That would be, that would be tainting it one way or another. It's just voluntary, you shouldn't, yeah, we don't, no cookie for the snack.
Okay, and then is it a paper survey or is it an online survey?
It's a paper survey, we would request to do it paper-wise.
Okay, and then, um, can parents request a hard copy to opt out? So, like, if you're putting it on there, but, I don't know, I don't have good internet where I am and I call and I say,
Yes.
can I get a paper copy of the opt-out?
Yeah, we say, come on up, here's a copy that you could preview and opt your kid out. And I would give them like two weeks before that. Like, I wouldn't say like, hey, we're taking this on Tuesday, you can come up.
Today?
Yeah, you can come back to, up until yesterday. That, that's not the way we're doing it because, you know, I recognize the fact, I've been doing this a couple of years. I recognize the fact that you, you have to give time for people to reply and if they don't reply, you didn't, maybe you didn't give enough time to do, to do what they intended. Right, let their intentions match where you can spread that out to. Because you're trying to be transparent about it.
Yes, and then my next question, this may not even be something you know, but this particular survey is obviously geared towards the age groups to, to look at risk factors for the age groups for the counties. And the counties, in my understanding of this, the counties are using that data in order to determine, make, make decisions about funding for specific services in their county.
Exactly.
Do the, do, do they, does the state or does state college also survey other age groups through different data collection devices in order to look at risk factors among other age groups? Or is it just solely teenagers?
The only ones I've, the only ones I've heard is this group, this six, eight, ten and twelve age groups. I'm sure, but to answer your question, maybe I'm gonna project a little bit and say that adults for the, for the younger age group or the adult age group, they may collect that information on a walk-in basis and use that as the data. You know, that's the other, if you operate a homeless shelter for domestic violence.
I guess my question is more geared for, and again, this may not be something that you know or that's even in your, your wheelhouse as a state. But, like, we're not targeting just our youth in the state for this data, I mean, that.
Yeah, I think you're collecting that based on the number of participants that use that service. I'm sure they collect that data and send that back because these agencies are all trying. I'm sure they collect that data and send that back because these agencies are all trying to find funding for the roles in which they play in each county. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's things unfortunately that go on that nobody really, you know, we all want to, want to care for people who are in this vulnerable situation, dependent on whatever that may be. Um, but I'm sure they, like, the people who are actually, um, going to that location to get that service of a domestic shelter or women's shelter or whatever it may be, I'm sure they're collecting that data. We have this many people this month for this, and that would be another set of data also going back to the state, which would ask them, obviously more participation, more need would result in more money coming back.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if it just didn't, they went four, six, eight, 10, 11, or whatever it was as opposed to three, five, seven, nine, 11, or if you know what I'm saying?
I'm sure they did. I mean, you have to pick at some point, right?
Right. It's just like when we test, we test this grade, this grade, this grade to see where the progression is. I'm just wondering maybe that's how it is.
Yeah.
Because it obviously, somebody that's not in eighth grade, but is in ninth grade can still get the services.
Well, yeah, and two years later, think about it.
Yeah.
In some ways, it, if you started in sixth grade, two years later, you're in eighth grade, and two years later, you're in 10th grade, and two years later, in 12th grade, it's almost like the same cohort going through.
My question was more about for people who, who view this as like the state targeting our youth specifically. I don't think that's the purpose. I think they're collecting data from other age groups by other means. This is just the means by which they're using to collect data from that age group.
Yeah.
Because they're all in full, or most of them are.
Yeah, and I, um, like, I understand the confidentiality and the nature of this survey and how it may be a concern for people. Um, if, but I also understand the, the services that are providing to try and seek funds to help in their mission, that they care for those problems every day.
Well, and everybody who's ever done anything with funding, especially if you're applying for grants or anything like that, you have to have data, that's part of the process.
Yeah, because you can't get it. You can't get any federal money without a data source. So I, I, you know, whichever way you guys decide on it, I just want you to know, I'll follow in that lead. I understand the concerns of it.
Okay, you said that, um, they don't ask for your gender?
I don't, gender?
They do. I have a copy of all this. I have a copy of all this question.
What particularly, see, I couldn't get it at that call. I went through it and trying to find the call, but what do they ask for?
They ask, um, are you female, male, or other?
Okay.
So that's one of the questions, that they definitely ask your gender.
And then grade?
No, they don't ask, they ask for your, yes. How old are you? What grade are you in? Are you Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin? What is your race? And then your gender. And, um, think of where you live most of the time. Which of the following people live there with you? Mother, father, step-parent, foster parent, grandparents, other adults, siblings, other children? Then, I mean, there's, there's a number, I mean, there are.
But they don't have to put in like their birth date?
No. And you didn't answer the question, because my concern was, so they're taking these on a Chromebook. Each student is, well, that's, you answered my question. If it was a Chromebook or a hard copy, because if it was a Chromebook, each student has a specific Chromebook assigned to them. And they could be, they could be identified through that. So, um, so, but yeah, but it was actually relatively easy to get into today.
Well, I, I went to two different sites. I went to the Epic site too. And it said, if you, it said on the PAYS website, if you want a popular, it, go here. And then I went to the Epic website, and I'm like moving on to different links to get them. I'm like, where can I get a hard copy of this?
Yeah.
Because we haven't given it in two years. I'm trying to recall what was on there.
Yeah.
Um, but like I said.
And it does go through alcohol, tobacco, and drug questions. And then it goes through, asks questions about your school, neighborhood, and community where you live.
But not specifics, just like not, like you're not saying what school you was sent to?
Yeah, at school, night, McGuffey High School.
Then it goes to questions asked about your family. Uh, when answering these questions, please think about the people you consider to be your family. Um, and there's quite a few questions about that. Um, you and your friends, actions related to alcohol and drug use and sleep, experiences at school, in your home, your community, bullying and abuse, and then feelings and attempted suicide. Does that have to be?
The mental health part of it, yeah.
Right, yeah. But if they answer yes to those questions about suicide, does that have to be reported?
There's no way, no.
It's anonymous.
No, it, it, it's not tied to anybody, so I, in reality, I should know who that, unfortunately, in this situation, I wouldn't know who that person was. But, um, like I said.
Well, I was just sitting there thinking the same thing. Man, if my child was sitting there saying I often feel suicidal, I'd like to know that. But in this particular case, there is, and that was why I asked about how it's given. Because, I mean, obviously, if I'm using a specific machine, that can be back to me.
Well, that's, right, that's why I asked.
But it's not doing the paper question.
We've been only doing paper and pencil.
Yeah, and they're not giving anything that would be able for them to identify.
Collected and boxed up here and, and sent back. They, they give you all the shipping and everything, and you just put the label on it, goes back to Penn State.
I would say I appreciate, um, the one call from parents for the announcement of the day of the survey. I appreciate the link on the website for parents to be able to opt out. I appreciate the parents being able to call and get a hard copy of that, of that, if they want it. Um, I, I just want to say thank you for that.
Yeah, it's, and those are things we've always done. Like, I mean, obviously, the link on the website's a little bit different. We've usually done in the past a paper handout, but actually, like I said, those don't make it home all the way. So the, the best transparent way to do it is actually one call then, and then direct them to the resource. So, um, like I said, I, I certainly understand that some of the school districts will be doing it, some of them won't. I understand both sides of that coin. If there's any other questions about the PAYS survey. The second thing I have on your desk there, um, on your, in front of you there. I was fortunate here just a few days ago to get informed that McGuffey High School has received a designation from the college board, uh, as to be on the school honor roll based on our academic performance, um, here, uh, as a school last year, based on the class of 2023, which were obviously last year's seniors. Um, this designation is a new program put out by the AP. I would say that it's not an easy designation to acquire. Um, so let me talk a little bit about there. In there is the, the certificate, a copy of the certificate, a copy of the letter that went back here. Um, there's a page with a couple pieces of data. We are a bronze, a bronze, um, awardee. There's platinum, bron, uh, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. And then there, there, there's nothing. Um, so let me explain each one of these categories, and I shared this with my staff today. And there, you know, I think it, it was good to recognize the teachers, obviously recognize the students that helped to contribute to the success of this. This is not an easy thing to attain. Um, if you look at college culture, sort of the first category, in order to get this recognition, uh, 40% of your students have to have taken an AP course during their, uh, four years in high school. We have 14 AP course offerings here at this school that are, continue to be funded by your, your efforts here as a school board. Um, our AP programs are expensive, uh, uh, to fund them. But they're also very successful. You could see that we have 48, almost 50%, which would be silver status. We have 48% of our students in the class of 2023 that took an AP class, um, during their four years of high school, which is, um, a, a, an outstanding number. Uh, it, it really is. College credit, in order to get this recognition, 25% or more of your students have to have had and actually transferred their, their, um, performance on that assessment into college credit, meaning they had to have a, a qualifying score of three or higher. So, you know, 25 is the minimum. So this means that it's not only, they're taking it based on their knowledge and gaining that, but they're also transferring that over to a college environment and receiving that advanced standing. And the last one, and it's one of the most difficult areas to acquire, but one that I think we can work on with some structural changes to improve on, is 2% or more of our graduating cohort took five or more AP exams during their high school experience, and at least one of those exams was taken in ninth or 10th grade. Because they don't want you sort of taking them all at once, right? Now, typically, all AP classes are offered in 11th and 12th grade. We only have one that is offered as early as ninth grade, and that's AP Computer Science Principles. Uh, the only prerequisite for that is algebra. So it's made to fit in there. Unfortunately, a lot of my kids wait until their senior year to take that, where I can make some structural changes and say, let's take earlier for the kids who want to do that. Now that I know this is sort of one of the criteria, I can make that adjustment. This is a new program, it's just this year, so not knowing sort of what the qualifications are, um, we sort of got this recognition blind just based on the way in which we operate. But I, I think it's a wonderful appreciation for the students in last year's cohort. Remember that class of 2023, that was the group that is freshmen, they were on a hybrid spread, schedule for three quarters of the year. They came to school two days a week typically, and that left a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of things that were probably missing in foundational courses along the way. So they probably weren't at their maximum potential, right? So that's the group that really paid for it because they were freshmen, which means they were probably in algebra, biology, some very fundamental courses, uh, basic English and, and things like that. So by the time they became seniors, they were able to have this performance. Now, obviously, this performance would tend to scope up. Now, that the group behind them, this year's current seniors, did not, they were eighth graders when that hit. So maybe it has less of an effect. You could make an argument that that's, eighth grade was even more fundamental. I think that this, the trajectory of, of this is something, um, that goes up. So I think it's a, it's a great designation for our school, it's a great designation for our students, it's a great designation for the staff and faculty that teach those, those subjects. And like I said, we have 14 advanced placement options, um, here, which allows us to punch above our weight in, you know, our size. We punch above our size academically, um, here. The programs that we have put in place and you continue to support and fund are powerful things for students to have those experiences. A lot of research by the college board, if you take one AP class, you know, they put out all the stuff. If you take one AP class in anything, that your chances of graduating from college in four years are 20% greater. Um, I can relate to your personal experience. Young man graduated two years ago, went to Penn State Maine, ran into him at work. I ran into the parent, said, I just want to thank you for, for, for some of the programs that my son has had. Um, he was able to get a whole full semester of 15 advanced standing credits because he had taken, I think he had taken nine AP classes here, had seven qualifying scores, ended up having a whole semester of advanced standing at Penn State University main campus, and is able to save not only the $30,000 for the semester, but also graduate a half a semester early. And, you know, if you don't think that this school can't predict, can't prepare your kid for, for college or university, then you're really, you're looking at something that is not, not relevant. Our kids who go to school, this school does a great job at preparing kids for the next level. They do, and a lot of our kids walk in there with advanced standing ahead of time. So, you know, as long as we continue, um, you know, to, to have these programs, I think we're sort of maxed out of what we can provide right now. But they are very powerful agents of change in those kids' lives, and they make their lives a lot better. In particular, this young man, but there's, there's a lot of cases here. So it's money well spent. Um, I believe in preparing, you know, my job is to make sure they have as many doors open. If you want to go to four-year college or university, that door's going to be open to you. You're going to have the experiences throughout. If you want to go to trade school, that's my job to prepare you for that as well. If you want to go into the military, if you want to go into the world of work, if you want to start your own business. Like, um, but obviously, since we're about 45% of our kids go to four-year college and university, we have a program that's still, um, very vigorous in terms of preparing them. So it's a great designation, wanted to share that with you here, shared it with my staff, shared it with community today on Facebook. Um, we're just, we're really happy to have that resignation and show what we can do to prepare kids.
Well, congratulations to the teachers and the students.
Thank you.
To the administration too.
Great job.
Thank you.
Do you have any ideas of what the kind of schools are able to achieve?
No. Because this is the first year, that's one piece of information I was looking for today because I wanted to be able to say that. Obviously, how many schools receive this designation? How many are platinum? How many are gold? How many are silver? How many are bronze? Um, I, that, that's not out yet. But the one thing is that looking at that criteria, if you have 40% of your kids taking advanced placement offerings as one of the criteria, I would say that's a tough, that's a tough challenge, especially even in a bigger, in a much bigger school, uh, right? We have as many AP course offerings as, as, like I said, Trinity, Cannon Mac, they may have one or two more. Everybody else, we are way above them.
Well, then if you go down, it's going to get even more, just more challenging, right? Because then it's at least 25% of them who receive qualifying credit.
Yes.
And then from there, at least 2% or more that have taken five, at least five, and some of those in ninth and 10th grade. I mean, you're, so you're, it's getting more and more.
Yeah, that last one, I think a lot of people are going to do some changing in programming to sort of make that one obscure a little bit more towards that way. But I'd be happy to come back and bring you back some more, um, like, like data on AP programming here. We keep very good, the college board provides very good information about our participation rate, about our qualifying score rate, uh, about the, the number of AP scholars we have, AP honor students. Like, we have all that information, and I, I can maybe wrap that in, into a future presentation about exactly what those programs are. And maybe even some teachers come in and talk about their courses. We've done that in the past. Whenever we brought in a new course, we brought on AP English Language, probably, I'm going to say it's about six or seven years ago, we brought on AP Statistics, brought those teachers in to explain exactly what those courses are. So, um, and maybe we could just, in a, in a future board meeting, we could put together something where we could, you could really learn a little bit more about that powerful tool.
Thank you.
Are you, um, do you look to see if, uh, we're going to qualify this?
Qualify.
For this issue?
It's too, it's too early, no, because we don't know, the, the kids won't take the test until May. So we don't know who's going to, what their score is for the advanced standing there. I know what my, what my numbers are, um, here, but that, 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 I can disaggregate that all once the score results come back. I'm, I'm sure we'll.
That's still above this number.
Yeah, we'll punch above that, yeah.
They test in the spring, but I meant.
Yeah, yeah, May.
Yeah, they're not scored until this summer.
On one, on, we use again that first week of July, on like, on AP tests, and believe me, in that week, we're giving like a lot of tests. And, um, every test has to be on the designated day, like you're there, AM, PM. Like, US History is Friday, May 6, AM. That's going to be that spot this year, next year, and it, it's not movable. But, um, like I said, um, I think it's a, it's a great recognition of the efforts of the students and the staff. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And again, congratulations. Dr. Eber?
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bonus, for first the information and the research on the PAYS survey. And also congratulations to you, the teachers, all of the students that participated, and for the recognition of a 2023 Advanced Placement Honor Roll. Uh, who I asked on tonight, I have, um, a place on the agenda, two new policies for a first read this evening, uh, and a third policy with no revisions, but it does require a, a board approval. So first, there is Policy 137, uh, that's regarding, uh, home education. Uh, Section 1327.1 of the P D School Code, uh, was recently updated, uh, August 21st, 2023. Um, this is designed to permit a parent, a guardian, or even a legal custodian to be the supervisor overseeing the child's home education. Um, primarily, the difference from the, uh, board-approved program that we already had in place, um, to now is that in the past, the board approved the program of how instruction, uh, was to be implemented. And now that supervisor, who I said could be a parent, guardian, um, uh, or, or a legal custodian, uh, must submit either a notarized affidavit or an unsworn declaration to the superintendent. Um, but pretty much when you look at, uh, the purpose, procedures, everything that was in place before, according to the best, um, the, the requirements really haven't changed any other way. So that's the first item. Any questions about that?
No, I just, um, the, I know starting this year, that there was a change in the law that starting this year, students could participate, home education students could participate in co-curricular academic, um, including, um, career and technology education. So does the policy cover that? I mean, I know that the policy basically says, we're going to follow the law as it's written. So it should cover it, but I just want to make sure. And then the other question I had was, I noticed that in the revision, we dropped, at least if I'm looking at it correctly, we dropped the language about the load of instruction materials and participation in programs of Western Area Career and Technology Center. And I, again, I understand that the way that it's written and that we are going to follow the law means we will abide by those things. But here's my concern. But here's my concern in dropping that particular language. The average homeschool parent is not reading the law. And how else are they going to be aware that those opportunities are available? You know what I mean?
Certainly, and I think, um, as we changed this, uh, I would say a little more than a year ago to reflect that, right, so that, um, we would allow for those students to participate. Uh, for example, with the Western Area, um, they probably weren't looking at our policy to begin with. That's something that we, um, would have to make more, that we have to communicate more from a school perspective than it would be from the policy perspective.
Okay. And, um, Amy also told us, I'm sorry, Ms. Shrimp also told us that there's another policy that's included with that. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, the second policy is, I'm going to, in a moment, ask Ms. Shrimp to join in on this one. Uh, so you're probably looking at this and thinking, okay, so Policy one thirty, I'm sorry, Policy, uh, seven eighteen, which is service animals in schools, didn't we just pass something similar to this? Uh, by the way, this is also First Read, no board actions required. Uh, this is different. So we passed, um, in February of two thousand twenty, Policy seven one eight point one, and then we revised it actually in March of two thousand twenty-two, um, which refers to therapy dogs in the school and not service animals. So with that, I'm going to have Ms. Shrimp, uh, take you a little bit deeper into understanding the differences, but also why, as a district, we need to have this approved. So, Ms. Shrimp?
Thank you, Dr. Eber. So, um, first, I, I had a conversation with administration where people are starting to talk about wanting to train their dogs to come to school as emotional support animals. Uh, emotional support animals are not service animals. Service animals are specifically animals who are trained to, the one that we would all be most familiar with would be like a seeing-eye dog or a Caesar-sniffing dog or something like that. That's a service dog. Um, there's, there's specific requirements for a service dog to be in school, and the service dog must be related to the disability in which it serves. And this policy actually lays all that out. And just so you all know, it was not a typo. The ADA was changed in two thousand ten, that service animals can be dogs or miniature horses. So that wasn't a typo on my behalf, like, you, you can have a miniature horse as a service, I guess a service horse is what you would call him, but they, they have to be between seventy and a hundred pounds. The facility has to be able to handle their weight. They have to be health-trained, the same as the dog, things of that nature. I, I've never seen a service horse, but we do, we do have to include them because under the ADA, they are, they are considered service animals. Uh, the big thing that, that I'm seeing is from my other districts, are people are confusing service dogs with emotional support dogs, and people are saying, well, I'm going to bring my dog in and train him as a therapy dog. Well, therapy dogs are also a different, a different animal, so to speak, and you have a policy that covers therapy dogs, and they're brought in when there's an issue where you need to have a dog to, like, I see them in desks or, you know, tragedies, tragic situations where they bring in a therapy dog. But, I mean, I, I had a district, and, and I told Dr. Eber this today, and I'll share it with all of you, where a teacher had a dog at her desk and was calling him a, a therapy dog. He was in her desk drawer.
So the two dogs that we have, he being got, those are therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
So we as a district pay their owners.
Does therapy, well, service dogs are trained to do a certain, I'll, I'll go through each. Service dogs are trained to do a certain thing, like seeing-eye dog is trained to help.
Right, right.
Therapy dogs are trained, also trained and have certification to be, like, well, well behaved and to let people pet them and don't care if people pull on their ears or yank on their tails. They also go through rigorous training. Emotional support dogs do not go through that kind of training. And that's one of the reasons why you don't want people to start bringing in emotional support dogs because there are issues with legal and litigation and everything along that nature. So.
And service animals are certified as service animals, right?
Correct.
They have to wear the vest when they're quote-unquote working.
Part of the problem, though, really, is that people can now buy the vest when they're born.
Uh-uh, not they.
They're for an individual.
Correct, correct.
Service dogs are for individuals. And the therapy dogs can be everyone.
You can have a service, because they're training service and dogs specifically, is what I'm thinking of, to help people who suffer with, like, seizures.
Right.
Um, and that kind of thing.
Right.
So, but those are working, and I quote, I quote, working dogs.
And they have to, they're, they're pinned to someone's specific disability. So, like, Ms. Jackson couldn't bring my service dog to school because she doesn't have my disability.
And that, this policy covers.
Correct. So this was brought about because somebody wanted to bring their miniature horse.
Correct.
This was just an addition. Well, and my concern is because there's rumblings of people wanting to bring animals to have the policy in effect before someone brings the animal, then someone's saying you're not discriminating.
Well, I hate to play the devil's advocate, but, okay, what if I'm allergic to dogs? Or my child is, like, my child is allergic to dogs? And has a classmate who needs even a service animal? Like, how are we as a district handling that, or are we prepared to handle that? And you, I'm not expecting you to answer that, by the way. Well, and I, I would say that too, but I just was curious, you know, if we're putting a policy in place, we probably also then need to be thinking about some kind of a protocol to handle a situation like that at the same time, correct?
Obviously.
Yes, I would think that'd be correct, yes.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think that's one of the concerns about people bringing in emotional support dogs is because you do have, like, here's one thing, to have one child who needs a, a service animal. If, if everybody brings in their emotional support dogs, you're going to have dogs everywhere.
Right.
So.
I think, I think I need emotional support dogs for board meetings.
Does anybody have any questions for me about that?
No.
Or, or please don't ask me about miniature horses because I don't know.
Philly has, what was it, or more of Philly catching the guy that they would let in because he wanted to bring his emotional support alligator in.
That's on the plane, too.
Yeah. Okay, Dr. Eber, anything else?
Actually, the last item then is, there are three policies for approval tonight. There are Policy nineteen nineteen point one and nineteen point two. Uh, there are no changes to the policies. It's actually been under the advice or recommendation of the P A F P C, which is the Pennsylvania Association of Federal Program Coordinators, that it's good practice to review and approve the parent-family engagement, uh, policy annually. Um, the last time, well, so we adopted the policy in April, two thousand nineteen. Um, and this year, I think I've mentioned this to the board once, in the spring of this year, uh, we're going to be going through a federal programs audit. So, uh, it was advised to me by, by a recent meeting of the Association for, for Programs to just have this approved. Uh, there, there's no changes, so this is just going to have.
That's one for each building, right?
There's one for, there's, there's the overall, uh, uh, engagement, uh, policy, which is nineteen, and then Clayzold is nineteen point one, and Joe Walker is nineteen point two. That's correct.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, uh, for committee time.
Woo-hoo. All right, so at that point, um, we are going to adjourn the committee meeting at six fifty-seven. We will reconvene for regular meeting at, how much time do we need? Seven, seven oh five? What time do we need? Seven oh five.
Mr. Wilson, if you'll let me know when you're ready? We are ready. We are not ready. Hold off on the countdown. What about this? Two ringy dingy? We're aging ourselves, you realize that? You realize there are people who have no idea what that means?
I don't.
How old I am.
That's a shame. Okay, we are calling the regularly scheduled board meeting for ten nineteen twenty twenty-three to order at seven oh six P M. Roll call please.
Mr. Dean?
Present.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Leeder?
Here.
Ms. Livehart?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Shingle?
Present.
As you begin to get?
Mr. Banata? Ms. Doctor?
Present.
Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberties and justice for all.
Okay, I believe we are recognizing middle school student of the month.
Good evening, I would like to recognize Jenna Campbell as McGuffey's middle school student of the month. Jenna Campbell is McGuffey's middle school student of the month for October. The student of the month is nominated and voted on by teachers. Jenna shows consistent preparation, respect, involvement, dedication, and empathy in the middle school. We are proud of her and her attributes to McGuffey Middle School. Jenna is currently an eighth grade student, she is involved in the marching band, National Honor Society, and Student Voice. She would like to give a special shout out to Mr. Nardi. Jenna has had Mr. Nardi two years in a row and will be sad to leave his science class next year. Mr. Nardi always knows how to make an awkward situation fun. She is not sure why, but she loves to just listen to him teach. Her advice was students following in her footsteps is to just stay focused and be confident, everything else will come. Jenna has many upcoming events that she is looking forward to, however, she has a special days to the band trip at Disney World. Keep up the great work Jenna, we are honored to have you from McGuffey Middle School.
Okay, do we have a high school student council representative?
How are you doing tonight?
Hi.
So a lot has happened in McGuffey in the first two months of us being back already. First of all, fifty-three juniors will be taking part in the P S A T this upcoming week. At school but on their Chromebooks, this is the first digital P S A T done at school. Girls from our high school business courses participate in Dress for Success event for women professionals, professionals, sorry, sponsored by Range Resources at their headquarters. And Miss Lee business classes also selects, I think it was thirty students, I believe, were selected to go down to Claysville Community Center and get to learn a little bit about entrepreneurship, a little bit about how you can kind of create your own business from scratch, and it was a very useful event, I was there, it was amazing, it was a very fun time. We did scavenger hunt too. I haven't done a scavenger hunt in like, I don't know, I don't even know. Maybe ten years since I was in like first grade, it was awesome though. Parent teacher conferences were held on October sixteenth at our school, it was a great day outside of school, I had fun. Juniors and seniors attended the college and career fair at Penn West University on Tuesday, with over thirty schools and universities present, along with technical schools, trade unions, and branches of the military. Juniors and seniors can sign up for the A S V A B test being admitted on December fourteenth at high school. Some sports updates we got, there's a lot of these, so. Cross-country, both boys and girls have both won the section championship. They're also finished runner-up. They also finished runner-up and in third place in the Washington County meets. Both teams are currently prepping for the W P I A L individual championships on Thursday. The golf team made the team playoffs, finishing as section runner-up. Two individuals, Logan Crowe and Brody Wagner, qualified for the W P A L individual championships. The girls soccer team just missed the playoffs, but the future is very bright with almost their whole team returning and a lot of great eighth graders coming up. The boys soccer team finished in third place and a strong section qualified for the W P A L playoffs. They traveled to Addenworth Monday night for round one of the Whipple playoffs. And the section coaches selected Coach Brian Scoop Gillisby as coach of the year, which is a pretty good honor for him. The girls tennis team had a successful season and did qualify for the Whipple playoffs, and they did though lose week one at Swisky Academy, Swisc- Swiscley, sorry. Volleyball team right now is actually playing sophomorely at their senior night, I was just there before I came over here. And football is currently first place in the section as they get ready to play South Park tomorrow night, and then next Friday, it's the biggest game of the year against a team I'm not going to name down the road. Just be there and find out, it's gonna be great. And they get ready to host the playoff game too, no matter what, the following Friday after that, so it's gonna be big. And middle schools had an extremely successful sports year as well. The girls softball team is currently undefeated or went undefeated. The girls soccer team lost only one match. The boys soccer team finished with an eight and four record. And the boys middle school football team is currently playing the team down the road, and they're seven and one right now. And I don't know what the score is of that game, I'm trying to figure it out, but no one's telling me. So, that's all the stuff that's happening at school and everyone's glad to be back, it's been a good first couple months and we're just ready to keep rolling.
Well, thank you. We're glad you're back, you did a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
You too. At this time, we will, no.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda to the McGuffey Alumni Foundation fundraiser as presented.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. After public comment, oh, that's right, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will have public comment on agenda items. Steve?
Madam President, call Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. Um, I have a couple things I want to address, but I'm gonna start with the P A S survey. I know that Mr. Bonus said that he couldn't access it, but I did, I am gonna share this with him. What I'm gonna ask of the board is before you vote on this, I think you should all review it. I think his presentation was great, and I think the causes that they're looking to support is not a bad thing. I think before you vote on this, you should really see how invasive the questions are on here. I have several that really troubled me, and it starts off, are you male, female, or other? There's only two genders. And I don't know why we want to even suggest to students as young as sixth grade that there may not be. So, I just would like, since this isn't something that has to be determined yet, that you table it, review the survey before you make a decision. I don't know how you make an educated decision on whether or not you think this is okay, are you guys all right? You're interrupting my time. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this. And I find some of the questions on here disturbing. I don't know why we want to subject students as young as sixth grade to some of the questions of questionnaire. Maybe high school is appropriate, but I have questions about it. So, I'm just gonna ask you to table it till you all can get your hands on a copy of it and review it. You can make an educated decision on whether you think the benefits are actually there for the students. Okay, so, moving on. On the superintendent's report on the agenda, it had an item on here about Willing University School District affiliation agreement, but I don't remember Dr. Oberg talking about that. So, I don't know if it's something that's still being voted on, but my only question about it was, um, under background, it said, um, has submitted a school district affiliation agreement with McGuffey School District for the purposes of field experience and/or student teaching. So, I was just curious what the student teaching portion of that was. Um, I would also like to request when you get to item on the winter assistant coaches that you vote individually and not as a group. And the other thing I would like to add is, um, we'll do this one real quick. The budget for the, um, maintenance, the sports ma- the baseball budget, it says on here twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal budget, and they want the whole thirty-five hundred dollars transferred for the wild things. But my question is, for, um, girls softball for spring, what budget of that thirty-five hundred do they need to maintain the field if this is a request to designate the entire funds? And then the last thing I have is in regard to policy nine eighteen and on down. Um, I did a little research and I'm sure the solicitor is all over this. Um, but I did find out, because I know it had been questioned, if that ruling had been upheld. And what I read was that, um, and this came from the attorneys representing Tinsbury School District, that almost after a year of litigation, the board settled the lawsuit and paid three hundred thousand dollars in attorney fees and nominal damages to the families. And then P S D A put a policy, put the policy under review for change following that court's ruling. So, I would just like to ask before you vote on it again, that I'm gonna again request that maybe you change some of the verbiage. I will also say through my research, I found that abusive language is not covered in threats. If you do either one, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, that's actually not on the agenda tonight, I wasn't thinking of that.
Oh, was it removed?
Yeah, it's, no, that's...
No, we talked about it.
Well, we had tabled it last month, but we didn't bring it back this month.
I thought Dr. Oberg talked about policy nine eighteen.
No. That's...
Yes, he did, he absolutely did.
No, nine eighteen is the parent family engagement.
It's different. It's not the same when you're...
I'm sorry, guys.
No, I'm sorry, I've been here going, was taking notes, and then they're like, oh wait, that's not on the agenda. Because we, we did table that last month and we did not bring it back this month, pending revision.
Okay, all right, I apologize, I don't know why I thought that nine eighteen was that politics. Well, clearly, I missed one, and you're all lucky, you're off the hook.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate your time, and like I said, I just really wish you will table the P A S survey until you all review it, and I will send a link to that survey to every one of you on your board, on your district's emails, so that you can review it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Marjorie Florida.
Good evening, everyone, Marjorie Florin, East Finley Township. Um, a lot of my concerns were for, uh, policy one thirty-seven, which has been cleared up to the most part before even, um, talking with you guys. So, I don't really have much on that right now, um, other than in the Pennsylvania law for homeschooling, um, which I have read, and I don't, I don't know if you said that, Donnie, but a lot of homeschooling parents don't read the law. I read it, and I read it like thoroughly because I was a first-time homeschooler, so I wanted to know what I was getting into and what I was expected to do as a parent for my children. Um, one of my concerns though is how, when I did con- I didn't know there's actually a person affiliated with the school that can help parents, um, for, through homeschooling. There's actually a person in McGuffey that helps, I believe.
Believe this. Yeah. No, 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 to clear that up, um, the superintendent, all the paperwork goes to superintendent, the superintendent is, the superintendent's office is the one where that paperwork is held, um, it's submitted, that kind of thing. But there is not like a liaison for homeschool parents in the district.
Okay, well, when, right, okay. So, whenever I, um, homeschooled my children in twenty twenty, I had read in the law that the school district was to, if the parent were to ask for the curriculum, um, that that should be given available to the parent. And I thought that I, that was what I had read, but when I called the school, I was told no, that those materials were not available for me. And in turn, I was a little bit upset, and I spent twelve hundred dollars, uh, for my kid's curriculum that year, and it really would have been nice to save that money. Um, so, a little bit upset about that, but, um, other than that, I don't think there's anything else. I mean, I had a lot written in, and now you don't have to hear it, so.
Thank you.
I hope you guys missed me, last month was my daughter's first birthday, so I wasn't here, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Last Madam President, uh, Jackie Hofer, Havana, she's, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jackie. Oh, Havana.
I just couldn't get to see you, I'm sorry.
Um, Jackie Havana, South Franklin Township. I just wanted to start by saying I've been homeschooling for the past four years in McGuffey, and I've always had great experience dealing with the administration and the ladies who work there and sending my letters and turning in my things, so. I've always boasted to other moms in other districts how great McGuffey's been to homeschool. Um, so that being said, really, I just had a question if anyone could clarify more so what Dr. Oberg was saying. I think some of us are still confused what, um, one thirty-seven says, because we thought it was the same, but he said that one part was revised. But we're tr- I'm still trying to grasp what the difference was.
At this time, this is your comment, so I can't answer questions, but when we get to that part in the regular meeting, I'll be happy to address that.
Okay, then that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, that's all.
Can I ask a favor, I had a minute left, and I forgot really one important part because I let myself get lost there. Can I, can I have that?
I don't care, that's fine.
Are you okay with it?
You can have it for five minutes.
I promise, I'll be quick. It has to do with the P A S survey, and I follow God for all including this, but per Pennsylvania School Code, section fifteen twenty-six, it specifically states, this policy shall apply in any situation where a student is expressing suicidal thoughts or intentions of self-harm on school property, at any school-sponsored activity, or any public vehicle providing transportation. Um, this policy is also, uh, shall also apply following a suicide attempt. Anyway, my point is, there are questions on this sur- on this survey that ask a child if they're suicidal, or if they have suicidal ideation. So, what my concern is, whether this is anonymous or not, per Pennsylvania School Code, that has to be reported if a crook child says that, expresses that on school property. So, it's just something for the solicitor to look into. Um, and, and on, even on a bigger picture, morally, if you have a student take this survey and they answer that, and it's never addressed, and they do something, that kind of lands kind of close to home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Steve?
That's all.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, school board meeting as submitted.
No move.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the general time schedule bill since September twenty-ninth to October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, check seven eight two five one to seven eight three nine three, and the amount of one million thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents is submitted.
Um, second.
I'll just get that out of my mouth. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the youth service schedule bill dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, check seven seven one one to seven seven two five, and the amount of sixty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents as submitted.
No move.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of September twenty twenty-three as submitted.
No move.
No move.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the school district affiliation agreement between Wheel- between Willing University and McGuffey School District for field experience and/or student teaching. The term of the agreement would be for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic year.
No move.
Any discussion? I will just say, the question was asked, and just to be clear, um, this would be so that Willing University students who are in the education, um, programs can do student teaching.
And do so ob-?
And observations. That's what that is.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept a grant of one thousand dollars from Alice Boone May Memorial Fund per McGuffey School District Policy Number seven oh two, gifts, grants, and donations.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. And thank you to the Alice Boone May Memorial Fund.
And that's one for new schools.
Yeah, yeah, and that's such a great legacy.
She was a pianoist when we were that age.
I can tell you personally, Alex and I rode the bus together when I was grade school, she was the oldest one I was with.
I had to get that in there, did I?
And we were both in the dance.
Yeah.
Did we have any idea who applied? Did somebody apply, or did they? I think it's just federal.
They just grant, I think.
Yeah, it's just a grant.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve students in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve to participate in the twenty twenty-three Pennsylvania Youth Survey at no cost to the district.
I make a motion to table this. I second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Oppose.
Okay, roll call please. Okay, roll call please. Sure. I can't imagine why you can't.
Okay, I forgot to tell them my all that, okay. So, Mr. Ross?
Uh, no to table?
Yes, this is the vote to table, so no to table, he says, okay.
Liveheart? Yes, to table. Mr. Dean?
Yes, to table.
Ms. Single?
This is to table?
This is to table, yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
No.
Mr. Leisure?
No.
Ms. Doctor?
Yes, to table.
Five thirty, to table.
So, at that point, it has been tabled, um. Just so that we don't leave Mr. Bonus, like, in limbo. No, I'm just- No, I just want to be clear on, we're tabling it to bring it back next month. Um, and in that month, I would ask the school board members to ask for it to be tabled, to be ready to vote on it at that time. I would appreciate that, okay?
The school board meeting next month is, I'll put it out there, and I have the timeline for this to administer by December twenty-sixth.
I think November sixteenth is the meeting.
Sixteenth, but they have to strip. It may be doable, may not be doable, I don't, I don't know, I can't remember how long we put them to strip everything to us. I bet it must- We wait that long, we may not have the time to administer anything.
Okay. Again, I want to say to you, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate all the work that went into it. Um, and I do really appreciate the options for transparency, thank you. Um, and we are going to put it back on the agenda for next month, so.
It could just be too late.
We don't know that, it may be.
He's just warning us.
We don't know that it is.
I do, I do want to say thank you for all the options to opt out. I think that was something that was fearful, and I'm, I'm just going to put this out there. I agree with, um, Ms. Vicki's comments there about the gender thing, but we don't make the form. The form comes to us, so we can't, we have no control over that. All they want is the data. I could keep my job on that day, or I could opt out. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I need a motion to approve and list of the additional members of the Chapter Three, Three-Nine Guidance Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve girls on the run and kids of steel as school activities at Bill Walker for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year at no cost to the district. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Discontent? Or, in fact, opposed? None of discontents? Motion carries. I'm having myself there. Dr. Ober, do we have need of agenda? No. Oh, wait, 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 Dr. Ober, I forgot, H-six. H-six is, um, the McGuffey Alumni fundraiser. I need a motion to approve the McGuffey Alumni fundraiser as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent? Motion carries. We will let Mr. Brooks know that it has passed. Now, Dr. Ober, do we have need of executive session?
Yes, Madam President, for personnel in contract.
Okay, I need a motion for executive session. Second. Didn't even find it, I'm going to need a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discontent, we move to executive session at seven thirty-three P M.